... on our access channel. This will be recorded. Unfortunately, the YouTube livestream is not working currently, but we are recording the meeting, so anyone can watch this afterwards. The good news is those who chose to participate in public comment tonight were able to log on, so they're with us as well. I'm going to get started by asking the city clerk if she will call roll for us, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy? Commissioner McElroy? Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present. And I'm pretty certain Commissioner McElroy was on the call, right, originally?
She was, yes. She may be having technical issues.
Okay.
Yeah, she was, and we did test her earlier, and we could hear her. So I'm assuming she got kicked off.
I'm seeing her.
Oh, do you see her? Okay. Commissioner McElroy, can you hear us?
I guess not. Oh, it looks like, is she trying to talk?
Mayor Harless, could you turn your mic up?
Um...
The volume?
Maybe my microphone isn't working on my headphones. I'll take it out. Commissioner McElroy, do you want to log out and log back in? And see if it gets better. Just let us know when you get back in. Okay, we can't hear you for some reason.
Yeah, and she's not muted. I've got her unmuted, so we should be able to hear.
Yeah. I think, Commissioner McElroy, you can also call in on your phone. If you look at the calendar invite, there's a phone number and an access number. That might be helpful. Okay, I can read your lips almost. But we can't hear you still. I'm going to go ahead and move forward while you're figuring that out. Just let us know when you call in, okay? Okay, we're going to move on to the invocation. I'm going to ask Commissioner Watkins, would you lead us in the invocation, please? Oh, please unmute, Commissioner Watkins.
Am I muted?
You're good, you're good, I can hear you.
Okay, that's great. Father God, as we come to you in prayer, Lord, we just thank you for this day. Thank you for many blessings. Thank you for this wonderful community that we live in, the great citizens and people that make us a strong, progressive city that's on the move to create jobs and educational opportunities for our people and to support each other and try to get through this pandemic. And we just pray your blessings will be on our community. And on this meeting tonight, we guide and direct our lives as we make decisions that we would make the best ones for the city moving forward. We forgive us where we fail you. We love you and ask all these things in Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Watkins.
And Mayor, just to let you know, you're live on YouTube now.
Oh, great, good news, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. I can not hear you, Commissioner McElroy. You still trying? Commissioner Abraham, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I will. Going to count down from three, guys. Three, two, one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I think we're all going to look forward to getting back to normal in these meetings. I hear feedback. I know we're having a hard time with our Commissioner McElroy getting on. And I'm missing you guys last time. So at this time, Commissioner McElroy does have a motion to suspend the order of the meeting, I think so that she can meet with her family tonight. And I believe Lindsey, the city clerk, also has that. So while she's still troubleshooting, will you read that for us, Lindsey?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners of Paducah, Kentucky, that the rules for conducting city commission meetings be suspended insofar as they are in conflict with the printed agenda for this meeting in order to move Item 2A Wellness Center Due Diligence Proposal Discussion and Item 3A Municipal Order for the LOSE Agreement Suspension to the beginning of the meeting and to move Item 5E City Block Development Agreement to directly after the consent agenda. Otherwise, the rules are to remain in full force and effect.
Still moved. Second. Thank you. Enroll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy? Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Okay, so we are going to start off. And Lindsey, if you don't mind, just double-checking me tonight, okay? There's a lot going on at one time. So I do believe our first item is Commissioner Abraham's discussion. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. I will hand the floor to you, Commissioner Abraham.
Before we go, first... Madam Mayor.
Hold on one second, Commissioner. I had someone cut in. Who was that?
Go ahead, put that over.
Okay.
I follow that one.
We're good?
We're good.
Okay. All right, yeah, yes, thank you. Last week, the fourteenth, we had an amendment to the municipal order on the moving forward with the Aquatic Center. I didn't see, I didn't know about that amendment prior to our meeting. There were some things in that amendment, had I known about that amendment, that I would have brought to the table as far as questioning where those items came from. I don't know about anyone else, but I didn't see those. I didn't see the amendment. But as we move forward and we're looking at this project, there's a few things that is just out there on the table. And a lot of this, we've talked about before. But the wording in the amendment on Tuesday night, last Tuesday night, may have been a little bit misleading because I guarantee most folks, when they heard that the wording of due diligence and who would make sure that those due diligence were done was the city manager at present salary, not coming into a contract with another company for thousands of dollars on this project. So that was concerning to me because we talked a lot about the transparency here, and that totally caught me off guard. Having said that, we get a do-over. And so the questions that I've had then, that I've known about the amendment, I have now. First of all, on the Aquatic Center, very, very high, very, very high public engagement on this particular issue. From inside our commission chambers, when we invited the public to come and comment on it, on social media, obviously, and most folks are not for the project. It competes with the private sector. We've talked about that. Just one single project, it doubles our debt. Three, maybe the most important one, three of the four top vote-getters, that's going to be, we're going to get three new commissioners. Whether whoever, doesn't matter who the mayor is, we're going to get three new commissioners, and they've stated publicly that they will not support the project. So any money that we spend at this point, moving forward, on this project, is money wasted. It's not going to happen. So I think it would really be irresponsible for us to spend those monies in the face of so many capital projects that we have in front of us. Not, we talk a lot about the infrastructure, but we're talking about, we just got a report, the last commission meeting, over $6 million in, on the short term of buildings that need repairing. We got firefighters that are, you know, that are sleeping in buildings that we just kind of did a nice state job of keeping asbestos off of them. So when you look at these, when you look at the things that we're facing, when you look at the numbers that the performer that was presented prior to this pandemic that we're in, and then we're still going to be operating in the red at the $833,000 for the first quarter, five years. When you look at all of that and the fact that we're moving into a new year with a new commission, that's why I think the original municipal order to suspend any further work on this project needs to be halted, pencils down for real, and no, not once spent on this project. So that's why I asked the city clerk to prepare the municipal order that I have right here. So whenever you guys are ready for me to read that, I will. But that is my thoughts on this project.
I'd like to make some comments either before or as soon as he makes the motion, one or the other, whenever it's appropriate.
Commissioner, if they're just general discussion comments, that item has been, is on the agenda, so you're fine. I think we should wait for Commissioner McElroy before we vote or introduce anything, so she can participate.
Can you hear me?
I think that's her. Yes, we can.
Yeah, I can hear you now. I don't think you can see me, but I can hear you.
Okay, excellent. City clerk, is that okay for her to participate without a video? Do you know for sure?
Video is preferred, but if it is not accessible to the city government, then a phone call is okay. So if there is no way for her to access a video at this time, it should be fine for her to do so by phone.
Okay, thank you very much. I think she's logging back on also for a video.
I am.
Okay, good, okay, great. Then Commissioner Watkins, if it's okay, we will wait for your comment after we get Commissioner Abraham's... Yes, we can.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Very well.
I think your audio started working on your iPad. And now you have two audios going at once.
Okay, now can you hear me? Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? I think it's a problem. We have so many people on these meetings.
Do you still have your phone on as well?
Yes, I do, I do.
Okay, I think you can hang up your phone now.
Okay, okay.
There you are. Yes, okay.
There we are.
Yes.
Okay.
You're back.
Okay, I think it's the number of people. I've noticed in other meetings, the more people, the harder it is.
Yes, I think you might be right. Okay, we're just going to practice lots of patience tonight, everyone, with each other and with technology.
Yes.
Commissioner Abraham, do you want to go ahead and read your motion, and then Commissioner Watkins can share his thoughts?
You mean, I don't get to go over my notes again?
Oh.
No, that's fine, that's fine, I'm ready.
I could hear you.
She could hear you.
Okay, all right, okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners rescind the amendment to the municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Directing the City Manager to Continue the Suspension of the Agreement with LOSE and Associates Incorporated for Professional Design and Construction Management Services for an Indoor Recreation and Aquatics Facility until January of 2021, and further directing the city manager to continue due diligence related to the project as adopted at the last city commission meeting, so that the commission may vote on the original municipal order to continue the suspension of LOSE Design Associates Inc. agreement without additional due diligence wording."
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Watkins?
Okay, I support pausing the Aquatic Center until January 2021 and allowing the new commission to make that decision. Reasons are, the pandemic caused reductions in city revenue, and also it gives the citizens a voice in deciding to pursue the project or use the funds on floodwater mitigation infrastructure or some other qualifying public project. Both candidates for mayor have said in a WPSD-TV interview that they support the new commission making that decision. However, I don't mind the city manager continuing to collect information that will help the new commission in making the best decision for the city and our citizens. However, I do not support spending any more taxpayer money on the project. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before we take a vote on Commissioner Abraham's amendment to rescind, sorry, motion to rescind the amendment that we approved last meeting?
I would just say, the only thing that I think we really are interested is we have some partners that have expressed definite interest in this that could be game changers for the project. And if sitting down with the design team on an hourly rate would help them, it's possible we could present some game-changing money to the project, to the next commission.
Yeah, I would...
I mean, I think that you... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
No, Commissioner McElroy, that is really what most folks thought when they heard the term "due diligence" and the city manager would be directed to do that. If the city manager is going to do that at present salary and within-house, without, in his office, then I don't think I would be making this amendment here. But I am not in favor of spending any more taxpayers' money on a project where we told our citizens that the construction contract has been suspended and pencils are down and there's no more movement on that project.
Commissioner McElroy, do you have a response?
Well, I would just say, I don't think we're talking about a lot of money. Sometimes if a hospital or a major insurance company wants to join the project, they need to a little bit know more, a little bit more about the design. And we're looking at a menu of potential fees. We don't have any, won't have any contract with them for this. It would be simply money that the city manager is authorized to spend just to let a company sit down on an hourly basis and assess design. We're not talking about a lot of money. We all voted to spend a lot of money on LOSE Design, and we're halfway through that project. It could be a game-changing project if we had big money to bring to the table. I've had so many people tell me they're so disappointed it's paused right now. They wanted to go through... I think it's wise to pause it, because we're in difficult economic times. But it wouldn't take much to present a really game-changing project to the next commission. That's my only...
I agree with Commissioner McElroy. When I think about the feedback that we received from the community and... When we, when I think about the feedback that we received from the community and their concerns, in my opinion, the guidance that we've authorized the city manager to take on over the next several months are in direct response to some of those concerns. Those opportunities have been in the works even before COVID. We have, in the last, since we paused the first time, heard from some of those partners, and they still have significant interest in this project. We've actually heard from new partners that might have interest in this project. So one of the conversations we had with one of the potential tenants was that they were interested, but they would need to talk with the architect to see what the design of that space might look like, to see if it fits their business model, to see if it's something that would make sense for them. And we're talking about a partner who would be a tenant, a paying tenant of the facility. So those kinds of opportunities are still there. And again, I agree with Commissioner Watkins. We want to hand, you know, a good project to the next commission to make that final decision on whether this thing gets built. But there's a lot in the works that maybe even, you know, the candidates didn't know about that we know is still of interest. And so just giving that opportunity. I don't see us spending to the top of those fees. I don't think that's necessary. But the city manager asked for those fees so that we could know exactly what was on the table. And so I think it's a good idea for at least some of these opportunities to keep presenting themselves as they have. We have put in there a chance to talk to the tenant. We've put in there more community engagement, especially at a time when we're talking about inclusion. And this project was always meant to be an inclusive project for our entire community to gain access to. So more community engagement around what our community wants to see in a facility like this is also on the table during this time. And so again, it's, as Commissioner McElroy pointed out, no one is suggesting that we're spending big dollars. We're suggesting that let's hand the next commission good information that they can base their decision on.
Mayor, if I may, the numbers that I saw, the preliminary numbers that I saw were, could be substantial. It depends on how many meetings are held. It was depending on, you know, it depends on the works done. I mean, I guess, I guess what's looked, what's staring me in the face is the fact that the project, moving forward, outside of us here with this administration, there's no support for moving forward. So unless some folks have said some things that they really didn't mean, the money that we spend on this due diligence amendment is money that we're just tossing. So I mean, I hear what you're saying, but it doesn't, it doesn't pan out when you look at the decision-makers. You got folks on both sides of this thing, but the decision-makers have made it very clear that the project is not going forward.
I don't think this is a contract to spend any, to spend the money. It simply is the price list. If someone came forward to the city manager and said they wanted to talk to him about it and to talk to LOSE, then he can make that decision based on that price list.
Commissioner Wilson, that sounds like that I'm at a coffee shop and some guy just comes up and taps me on the shoulder and says, "Hey, I got an idea about your aquatic center." That's not, that's not what, that's not how this is going to go. We're going to engage someone, we're going to engage someone about what our needs are for this project, to get it off the ground, to make it look as great as possible so that we can present this to the next commission and keep our fingers crossed and hope that they decide, regardless of what they say publicly, to change their mind and move forward with this project. I'm looking at, and what I've seen and heard, not support for the project. Maybe you guys are reading something different. I mean, I don't know.
Commissioner Abraham, Commissioner Wilson's trying to respond.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I just said, Commissioner Abraham, you know that is not our intent. That's not my intent. And it's going to have to be, I think we would trust him to make the decision that it is a legitimate company or donor that he would be talking to. I don't think using the example of someone just not tapping him on the shoulder to talk about it would cause him to spend that money.
Absolutely.
We know we have interested partners. We know that. But we need to know how interested they are. And I think those could be game changers for the next commission if we brought a lot of private money to the... I think you said, Commissioner Abraham, when talking about the Marion Center, that if there was big money there, it gives legs to the project. And that's what we're hoping to do. Because we still think this is a growth project. It's a wellness project for Paducah. I do.
Well, I think the game changers that you're looking for is going to be the majority of the next commission voting on with the project. Bottom line is, those are the three game changers that matters, so...
I'm going to move, I'm going to call the question, if that's okay, unless anybody has anything to add.
That's good.
Everyone okay? All right. City clerk, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
No.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Mayor Harless?
No. Okay, I'm going to ask, I think we have someone on that might not be muted. I think that's Mr. Wayland. We're not quite ready for you, Mr. Wayland. All right, thank you. Okay, city clerk, would you read the next item? I think it is, refers to the LOSE agreement that we needed to finish out from last meeting.
Absolutely. "A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, 'A Municipal Order Directing the City Manager to Continue the Suspension of the Agreement with LOSE and Associates Incorporated for Professional Design and Construction Management Services for an Indoor Recreation and Aquatics Facility until January of 2021, and further directing the city manager to continue due diligence related to the project as amended on July 14, 2020.'"
Still moved?
Second.
Thank you. And just for clarification for the public, this was an amendment that was voted up last meeting, and we missed the one step, I think it was the new plastic things around us and being back in person. But we missed the step to actually vote on the municipal order as amended. So that's what we're doing here tonight. This is not new action. It is new action, but it is a carryover from the last meeting. So nothing new to be added here. Does anyone have anything they want to add for discussion before we call roll?
Madam Mayor, just for point of order, I didn't know if you wanted to have the public participate here that want to talk about this topic or not.
They participated last time, and we didn't suspend the order for the public comment tonight. I don't know if that was the intention. And so we would have to... Sorry, Commissioner?
I thought...
I'm wondering about my motion. Is it more appropriate to go ahead and read this before we vote on that?
No.
Or afterward?
We need to have it on...
Afterward.
Yeah. Commissioners, would you like to... We can do public comment here. I think we will, then, if that's... Commissioners, you guys want to do public comment on specifically the LOSE agreement?
Sure. I do want to add that this is keeping the project paused. It simply allows Jim to continue, the city manager, to continue a conversation if he is approached by potential partners. The project is paused for 2020.
Absolutely. Okay, let me pull up my list of public comment, and we will have a public comment tonight on this specific item. Let's see. I have some people signed up for both, for both this project and the other.
If we are just talking about the Wellness Center right now, I would ask for just comments related to the Wellness Center, and then to do city block comments during that item.
Okay, great. All right, with that being said, it looks like, just to remind everyone, we are staying on topic with the item on the agenda that you've decided you want to comment on. And then we have three minutes still the city clerk will be monitoring. And first up, it looks like Victoria Terra has signed up to make comment about this project.
Hey there.
Hello.
I really appreciate this discussion, and I appreciate all of our commissioners and the city manager and our mayor. And I'm very much in support of this Wellness Center. And I think that if we don't give it its time now to keep exploring it, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. And I would like to remind Commissioner Abrams that people change their mind all the time. And information is key. And if we can lay out the best information in January to our new commissioners, then we can all come back to the table and say, "It'll be discovered." And if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. But if something wonderful happens in the meantime, in the next four or five months, what a gift! It would be wonderful. I hope that you guys will support this and let our city manager... Thanks, you guys.
Thank you, Victoria. Okay, next up for public comment, we have Yvonne Gray. Yvonne, are you still on?
I do not see her on the call, Mayor.
Okay. If she pops on, let me know and we'll come back, or...
Yes, ma'am.
We'll keep going, thank you very much. And then next, we have Mary Byrne.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to say that it's a good thing to take advantage of this time and get as much information as possible to give to the next commission. There's been so much time and effort and money going into this project to this point that to just let it drop and not follow through on some of the leads that there are, I think would be very short sighted. It is a good program, I think, and it could be very good for Paducah. And, you know, maybe there's a naming business out there, tenants, whatever. I just think that we should take advantage of the opportunity and give that information to the next commission. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. We did have Scott Burnett signed up also. I think I might have seen he just left, but Scott, are you on the line?
I don't see him in the list anymore, Mayor. He was at the beginning.
Okay. All right. Okay, that was the last public comment on this specific issue. Any other commissioners have any discussion before we call roll? No? Okay. City Clerk, would you call roll for the vote on the amendment to the municipal order?
I think we're voting on the order as amended.
Excuse me, hang on. Commissioner Wilson?
We're voting on the order as amended. We're not voting on the amendment.
Sorry, thank you for clarification. We're voting on the municipal order as amended.
Commissioner Abraham?
Who's that? No.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we are going to move into the consent agenda, and then we will be bringing on the discussion that we moved up regarding the city block development. I am going to read this first. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the board members and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which the item will be removed. Does anyone have anything they'd like to remove tonight for discussion? If not, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval, please.
Approve minutes for the July 14, 2020, meetings of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Paducah. Personnel actions, file documents, a municipal order accepting grant funds through the Office of Community Oriented Police Services for a COPS Hiring Program, CHP Grant Award, in the amount of $375,000 for the hiring of three new school resource officers, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
We'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Lindsay to bring to the table item 5E, and I'm gonna ask the commissioners, if you don't mind, we have a presentation from Katie and then also from Wayland Ventures tonight. Do you mind muting your line? There's a lot of feedback going on, and I think we want to be able to hear their presentation. So, if you don't mind muting while they're presenting, I'd appreciate it, and then we can come back for discussion and questions once they do that. Mr. Chino, I think your line keeps popping up too, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am. So, I just wanted to make sure, though, Katie, if you'll tell me which document you want first.
Can you hear me? Yes, we'll do. We'd like to start with Wayland as the introduction, and then go into staff slides of the city block development agreement.
Great. And then let me get this on the table for discussion. And Mr. Chino, if you don't mind just muting our lines for us once this is on the table, because there's still quite a bit of feedback going on.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you. City Clerk, if you don't mind reading the motion, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing and approving a city block development agreement between the city of Paducah, Wayland Ventures Development LLC, for development of a boutique hotel, parking, open space, and mixed-use residential building located at City Block, bounded by Second Street, Broadway, Northwater Street, and Jefferson Street, declaring the real property to be surplus property, authorizing the associated property transfer and the execution of all documents related to same. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute a development agreement with Wayland Ventures Development LLC for a city block boutique hotel, parking, open space, and mixed-use residential building located at the City Block bounded by Second Street, Broadway, Northwater Street, and Jefferson Street, and authorizes the associated property transfer to Wayland Ventures Development.
So moved? I'll need a second, and I think you're all muted, so...
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Okay, now we're here, and it's really silent on here all of a sudden, so that's good news. Katie, I'm gonna hand the floor to you and let you lead us through the presentations tonight, and then we will have the commission ask questions, and then we will move on. Tonight is just an introduction, so that the public is clear. This is an ordinance, which means we have to read it once and then vote on it the second time at a following meeting. Thank you, Katie.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm excited to bring this project to you for its first reading tonight, and also to introduce you to the Wayland Ventures team, Bill Wayland and Barry Alberts, and I believe Mariah may be on as well. They are the team that we have been working with for the last two years on the city block development project. And so, we actually have two presentations for you tonight. We're gonna start with Wayland, providing an overview of their company and the work that they do and what they bring as our development partner to Paducah. And then I will go through the details of the development agreement that you guys will be voting on, hopefully in two weeks. So, I can turn it over to Bill and Barry.
Sounds great. This is Bill Wayland. I am on vacation, and unfortunately, in the cottage we're in, there are eight grandchildren under seven. So, we are a problem about the mute button, that if I mute, then Barry's gonna have to take over. We're very excited about being in Paducah, and I wanted to just run through some of what we do and give you a little bit of a perspective on that, and then kind of sum up, you know, how long and why we've been involved in Paducah. We are urban redevelopers. I was trained as an architect and urban planner, but about 20, well, now 27 years ago, I decided to just do it. And instead of having clients, I took on banks as development partners in redeveloping urban historic areas and creating infill in those areas, so that we could create vibrant urban districts. We have been long-term incremental players in those districts. So, we don't come in and build everything at once. We let the market evolve. We try to challenge the market and raise it up, so that we don't oversaturate it, but we do move it over time. And that creates some win-win strategies for the people that are in that neighborhood and the community as the property rates rise in critical areas. We've been particularly interested in my own town as developers. We have done consulting over the years all over the country. And then in the last, gosh, 10 years, we got members of the family involved. They took after their mother. They're much more organized than I am. I'm sort of the chaotic entrepreneur. And we have been strategically beginning to invest outside of the Louisville area. We're very active in Dayton, Ohio. We've got some projects up in Minnesota. We're looking at some in Indiana. But we have been working on this Paducah venture for a long time because of some long-term relationships that we have in Paducah. Let's see, we'll go, I'm supposed to be changing the slide. About ourselves, I just told you basically what all that was, and you can go on to the next piece. These are key players, myself, my daughter Mariah, who's a background in engineering and a master's in business, and is the CEO of our operation. I am now involved in future projects and strategic planning. My son Lee is involved in our leasing and commercial relationships with all of our various tenants. And Barry Alberts and I have worked together over the years. His background was in city planning, and he was the head of development for the city of Louisville for about 20 years. And he and I did a lot of the public-private joint venture work that created some of the real impact projects in Louisville. And he and I teamed up to form a joint venture company back, what is now 12 years ago. We got together right in 2008 for the depression, and now we're back with the viral stuff. But there's always demand to recreate urban areas. The next one. This just gives you a list of the type of projects that we've been involved in. You can look at it later. They're pretty high-profile. But the main aspect of it is, we do mixed-use projects and mixed-use districts. And our projects tend to at least be sized like we are in Paducah. We look for future opportunities at strategic buildings that are within or nearby those footprints. We've built multiple projects in both Louisville and Dayton. We currently own and operate with partners about a million square feet in downtown Louisville and the surrounding neighborhoods. It is broken up between hotel space, hospitality and retail space, restaurants. Another sector is office buildings, mostly technology-based office buildings. Another sector is parking and parking garages to support those things. And the final is apartments. And so, we've got a mix of those things. Thank goodness, in this era, you find that, like a stock portfolio, some things are operating great and some things are not operating so well. But as we all know, that too will change in another two years, and the ones that are down now will be up and the other ones will be down. So, it's a balanced approach to redevelopment. We try to bring in magnet pieces, and you already got some great magnets, like the Quilt Museum, the Convention Center. You know, we try to bring in areas and design buildings that make people want to come to them. And portfolio buildings that way. Next slide. We are public-private partners. We go in and we try to identify strategic opportunities. We'll be working with the Tiff District, especially in Paducah. This is all so an opportunity zone. They extended some of the opportunity zone legislation out to the end of this year as a primary incentive for investors. That's become a big part of what's going on in the country right now. We've got three existing opportunity zones that we created, two that are doing development in Louisville and one that's doing development in Dayton. And all those other things, I've calculated one time, I'd use 29 different pools, so that we can build beyond the market legitimately with banking success and move those markets. And the only way you can do that is through these type of partnerships. Next. Gives you a little bit of an idea of some of the sectors that we've built in and where these properties are located. Glassworks was sort of to the west, right on Ninth Street. We started that about, gosh, 20, over 20 years ago. Whiskey Row, obviously created Whiskey Row. That block had been abandoned for 20 years before we started that. Clay Commons is the old Henry Clay, one of the great buildings in Louisville. We took over a little over a block there and actually finished this one. That's all been redeveloped at this point into a mixed-use project. Liberty Green, we're sort of midway through. We've built 12 buildings there that connected the Medical District to Nulule. And the Ottoman is a project that's one of our opportunity zones funds that we're working on right now. Next. Just to give you an idea, we started in Dayton about seven years ago. We've got about a little over 100,000 feet of buildings that we've completed, historic. We've got another 200,000 in inventory that we're working on right now. Their allocation of tax credits is different than ours, and so we sort of time them to match the credits. It's a very similar area to Paducah. It's got some nice feel to it. It's about the same scale. And we're in the process of working on what ultimately will be about 14 acres up there. Next. And so, why Paducah? I got involved in Paducah ironically, a lot of stuff's about family for me. My wife's family is from Paducah originally. Her grandfather moved to Louisville when he became a federal judge, and so she's still got cousins down there. I got involved because as an architect, one of my clients took me into Paducah in the late 80s. I got to know some of your civic leaders very well, and really, they impressed me. I learned a lot. Fred Paxton was a wonderful man, a Notre Dame grad, just like I am. John Williams was building a spectacular company that is just doing some still magnificent stuff, is a real powerhouse for your city. And Joe Frampton, one of the things I always like about communities is when they've got local banks. And that's a really great local bank. We have relationships with contractors and engineering firms that have developed over the years. We've been involved in different planning efforts throughout different periods of time, since the late 80s. And, but this, we've been very much looking into opportunities like this to share our development expertise with... development expertise with cities that share our values of really thinking historic urban areas are important and helping to create strategies that we can develop over time to move the needle. And that sort of gives you an overview.
If I could, Bill, add a couple of, couple of comments to that.
Please do, Barry.
Can you guys hear me? Is my mic on? Yes, okay. So Bill gave a good overview. I just want to talk about, a little bit about how we operate and partially it's because of, my background was more in the public sector, Bill's was more in the private sector. So when we began working on projects initially in Louisville, again, 20 years ago, we, we were trying to figure out how to, how to build a project. And I don't mean, I don't mean physically, although ultimately it was physically, but in terms of constructing a viable, sustainable, successful project, we began a process where we, we worked together so that we figured out how the private sector, the investment of the private sector could be helpful and add value, where the city, the public sector could add value so that ultimately everybody is successful and the area that we work in is successful. A lot of, a lot of developers come in and they basically say, if you want us to develop in your community, we need X, Y, and Z. And it's a constant negotiation. We look for cities where we can collaborate and again, build those projects so that it makes sense for everybody. And we've really enjoyed working in Paducah the last year or so on this project because that's exactly what we've been doing with the mayor and Katie and Tamara and Jim. This is, there's a lot of issues on the site and, and we want to make sure it works correctly. So we've been working collaboratively and we, we only work in situations where we can collaborate in that, in that sense. The second thing, and Bill mentioned it, but I think he went, he passed it too quickly, is that we are really careful where we work. We don't work in lots and lots of cities. And partially that's because we only want to work in places we know about and we seem to understand. But more importantly, we don't do one project and then leave. We're, if we're gonna work in Louisville or Paducah or Dayton, we plan to be here for a long time. And that means multiple projects, multiple phases. We never sell projects, so we will be managing these projects five, 10, 15 years from now. And it's important because of that, that the whole community benefits from what we do because ultimately we're gonna need additional, we'd be interested in doing additional things here. So the fact that we have this background and Bill has this background in Paducah, I led the Renaissance area planning work in Paducah, I don't know, eight or nine years ago now. So we know Paducah and we like Paducah and we want this to be one of, one of the places where we're proud of our continuing work, not just this first project, but all of the investment that we make here. And the third point I want to make is that I know there's been some concern, comments, criticism, whatever you have about, we want to do this project and it's, and there's all of these existing buildings, historic buildings that need tenants and we're gonna sort of suck the life out of Main Street. And we can tell you over and over again that it's not our intention and it's not gonna happen, but I think we can talk about examples of where we have brought more activity and more life into an area and that in effect helps everybody, rises, raises all the boats. Paducah is a good city to use that euphemism. And the Glassworks project and the Slugger Field project, which is next to the Slugger Museum project on Main Street, those were two, when we did those projects, there were 600,000 square feet of empty space and in, on Main Street in Louisville. And we did those projects and the city contributed in some important infrastructure. And as a result of all of that effort, almost all of that space along Main Street has now been redeveloped and is occupied. We're doing the same thing in Dayton. So we always look to, as a, as a goal for what we do is to increase the overall level of activity on a 24/7 basis. And that improves markets and it gives opportunities to other, other buildings, other developers, other projects to be successful. We don't, we don't really care if other projects are successful. In fact, we are happy that they are. We're not, we don't see that as competition. We've worked in Owensburg for a number of years and we've never developed a project there, but we've helped them put together about a dozen projects that have been successful and the results have been pretty, pretty positive. And we feel proud of our, our little bit of help there, even though they're not our projects per se. So I just wanted to sort of reemphasize the point that Bill made was that we, we have a longstanding and continuing effort to invest in Louisville. We've made that effort in Dayton about, I think Bill said six or seven years ago, I think that's right. We're now, we now have five or six projects underway and we, we see the same thing happening in Paducah if we can start with this, what we think is a pretty important project at
Mayor, before we transition to the development agreement specifically, would you, do you want any comments or questions with the Whalen team?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the Whalen team specifically just about their way of doing business or what they've presented so far? Katie is going to actually get us into a more specific presentation about the development agreements. We can ask questions after that. But does anyone have anything specifically for Bill or Barry at this time? I think they're staying on with us, so we'll have them later also.
I did have a question for Bill or Barry, either one. You did talk about your local context. Would you expect to use local engineering firms and local contractors to help with this project?
Yeah, I'll start, Bill, then you can, we, again, because we're, we want to be part of the community, we always look to local participation. That relates to banks in terms of financing, that relates to investors, that relates to professional services. Obviously, we look for local tenants in terms of expanding their business. We're not somebody that comes in and brings a bunch of chain stores to a community. So yes, we want to be part of the community and we want to use as much of the local community as possible. And we certainly in Louisville do that, that's our home, but we've done that in Dayton and done that in other places where we have, we have developed. The people that know Paducah best are people that live and work there every day and it's to our advantage, to be honest, to, to utilize that expertise and that understanding.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I can only add that we've, we've had some, you know, this is still preliminary, so the first step is really to this agreement with the city. And we have, I've already had some discussions with some of the bankers, a couple of different entities that are, that are Paducah-based. And also I've talked to some contractors that we've had relationships with in the past and, and that will be a focus of our work. It's much better to use local folk. We have done that in Dayton. We have our team that then works with the local team.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions specifically about Whalen Ventures before we move into the development agreement specifics? Don't forget you're on mute and I can't see everyone, so I think we're okay. All right, Katie.
All right. So following kind of what Barry and Bill were saying, what is coming to you tonight is a development agreement that takes us with the next step on the City Block project. And that this is moving us from concept into implementation, more design permits and eventually the transfer of the private development projects. Next slide, please. So the last time we brought this project to the commission was back in March when we presented the parking assessment. And we've also communicated over the last year and a half, our city obligations under the pre-development agreement, which the commission executed in April of 2019. We have completed all of those obligations. Next slide, please. The site that Whalen has chosen is the City Block development site at 133 Broadway. This is a three-acre site of city-owned land at the corner of Broadway and Second, right along the riverfront. Next slide, please. And we've talked a lot about the goals of this project, which to reiterate why we're doing this, first and foremost, it's about connectivity, using real estate redevelopment to connect communities and to connect destinations, particularly in our downtown between the Carson Center and the Convention Center. Next slide. Next slide. To establish a downtown destination of a town square, which would be a gathering place and a new public open space to complete the streetscape, which was historically, buildings, buildings that provided lodging, provided housing and provided jobs. Next slide. We have heard from the public that they want to continue to maintain off-street public parking, so that is part of this development plan. Next slide. And then also to continue to keep and maintain and grow kind of the heart of our downtown community, which is the Second and Broadway corner. So that would be part of this development plan as well. Next slide. Are you there? Hello? Hello?
We're here. Can you not see us anymore?
You're frozen. If you can hear me, I can keep going.
Yes, you're on the TIF district project area map.
Okay. And so this project is part of a larger, the larger TIF project, which covers all of downtown, roughly 315 acres of downtown. And the City Block project is the keystone development project that will make the TIF work. We are continuing to work with the state on finalizing our TIF agreement. We received preliminary approval back in August of last year and we expect to receive final approval this coming fall. But we need to have a private investment of a minimum of $20 million to make the TIF work. And so this project joins eight other significant projects in downtown for the redevelopment and also redirection of infrastructure investment in this community. Next slide. So under the pre-development agreement, and you have seen this commissioners multiple times about what our mutual agreement was in terms of facilitating a development project here, what the developer was obligated to do, which was to produce a site plan and development concept for us, and then several obligations for the city in terms of due diligence, including environmental review, geotech, utility assessment, parking assessment, stakeholder engagement, and continuing to establish the TIF district prior to the transfer of the, of the property. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So next slide, please. We've done over 23 stakeholder listening sessions over the last 18 months. Next slide, please. And we have heard, you know, several comments and addressed many of the comments through this development process, including ensuring that public events will continue to happen downtown and at the site, maintaining view sites for some of our residents, continuing to prioritize historic building redevelopment, making sure that the activities that happen on the, the corner of the gazebo corner continue to happen and grow and that we continue to generate those activities, retaining public parking and making sure that it's city-owned, and then also having design approval. We've also addressed parking capacity and mobility. And then in this development agreement, what we have addressed are implementation schedule, conveyance of property, making sure that there's protective measures during construction as well as the financial terms and risk management, which we'll go through today. Next slide. So the final site plan is a $21 million private investment that includes the Boutique Hotel along Jefferson, two mixed-use residential and retail buildings along Broadway, and then 60% of the site continuing to be maintained for public parking and as well as two sections of public open space, a promenade along North Second Street and a green space along Water Street. Next slide, please. This slide shows the ownership tracks in which the buildings themselves would be privately owned by Whalen, the Boutique Hotel being approximately 22,000 square feet, the city-owned parcel in the middle is roughly 79 square feet that includes the parking, the urban parks, and then Track 3 being privately owned, again, the mixed-use development of approximately 24,000 square feet. Next slide. The next slide is the construction phasing. In the development agreement, we break this down into two different construction phases. Phase one being the Boutique Hotel, Track 1, as well as the public facilities, the parking and the open space. And then phase two is future development to develop the two mixed-use residential and retail buildings. Next slide. The development agreement is broken down or organized into six different sections. Next slide. And phase one, which is the construction of the Boutique Hotel, would be a roughly $12 million project. The plan is to construct 84 rooms, approximately 64,500 square feet over a four-and-a-half-story building. This would include lobby space, commercial and retail, as well as the hotel space and an event space on the top floor that would provide views that would be overlooking the riverfront. We've included in the agreement that this, that this design would have to meet the downtown design standards so that it complements the historic environment as well as to ensure city design approval. Next slide. The next slide is Track 2, which is still part of this first phase of development, but this is the parking facility, the green space and the open, and the urban parks. So what is planned is 172 parking spaces. This is a reduction of the existing capacity by 43 to, by 41 spaces, so we would be losing 41 spaces, but still maintaining 60,000 square feet of public parking that can be used by anyone. It would be 22,000 square feet of public open space and as an immediate next step, what we are proposing in this development agreement is to include a design charrette to work with Whalen and to get more public engagement on the design features of these, of these public facilities to establish the town square. Also in this agreement, we have, have terms of that the developer, Whalen, would maintain Track 2, but it would be, continue to be city-owned. Next slide. And can you guys still hear me? Because you're, you're frozen on my screen, so I want to make sure I haven't lost you.
You're in good shape.
Okay, good. And then lastly is Track 3, which are the mixed-use facilities. This is approximately a $9 million project of 54,000 square feet, three stories along Broadway, which is the same height as the buildings across the street on the 100 block. We would have about 18,000 square feet of commercial on the ground floor and up to 48 units of residential on the second and the third floors. Again, it would, it would apply, the downtown design guidelines would apply to these buildings and the city would have oversight on the design of, of the exteriors of the buildings. Next slide, please. So earlier this year, we had the site appraised and it was appraised for the whole site of $810,000. And so what is in this development agreement is to take that price and proportionate to the individual development tracks. So for Track 1, we are proposing a sale price of $141,000 and then for Track 3, $155,000 for a total sale price over time of $296,000. Also in the development agreement, we have proposed to defer the purchase price to six years after the completion of a phase. And this is a small incentive to kind of help the project be successful and for it to generate some money and then to be able to pay the city back in five consecutive payments. Next slide, please. This is the completion of the deliverables and the dates. So in the development agreement, we lay out a very specific timeline and what the obligations both that the city and the developer need to provide prior to the transfer of the property. And so as you can see from this And so as you can see from this slide, 90 days from the effective date, which would be the beginning of August, what the design charrette would occur for the public facilities. Six months from then, the developer, Wayland, would provide design drawings for both the tracks, to provide design and construction drawings for the public facilities, for the city-owned facilities, to provide the financial commitments for the Boutique Hotel, and then to obtain their permits, license, and other approvals. What the city is committing to within the first six months of signing this agreement is to finalize the TIF, which we hope to do that in the fall, and then to provide the financial commitments for the public facilities. Within a year of this agreement, we would be looking to transfer that, that property, and then about 455 days, you know, 90 days after that, to begin construction. We estimate that the Boutique Hotel would take approximately 18 months to construct. Next slide, please. So in the agreement, we lay out what the financial commitments are for both parties for implementing the City Block project. As, as already communicated, the private development, the Boutique Hotel and the mixed use, Wayland is committing up to $21 million for Track 1 and Track 3. And the developer is going to pay the city $296,000 for those tracks, for the sale of the property. What the city is committing by executing this agreement is the subdivision of the parcels, upgrading the utilities if needed, and any remediation. So the site does have existing utilities. It has electrical, it has water, it has sewer, but if there are upgrades that are needed to bring utilities to the site, then the city would, would provide that. Like in other developments, we facilitate development by bringing utilities to the site. We are not committing to paying the developer's utilities. And then secondly is, Wayland is accepting the site as is, but if through further due diligence on their part, they find that there's a need for remediation, then the city would work with them to find the best way to remediate the site and to reimburse for those expenses. Again, we did a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 environmental site, or site assessment. We did soil, soil borings, we did chemistry analysis, and Wayland is accepting the site in as-is condition. And then what this agreement is doing is, we are saying that we want to take the next step on designing the public facilities, the parking lot and the open space. The developer is committing to finance, construct, and maintain the public facilities, and the city would then reimburse for those expenses for work that's happening on city-owned land, the improvements to the parking lot and the improvements to the open space. All of these expenses are TIF reimbursable, but...
Katie, thank you for your presentation tonight. It's been very informative. Thank you, Katie, answering all the questions I've sent you this week. I appreciate that very much. And I'm really excited about this project. I've asked my Louisville friends about Wayland, and they can say nothing but wonderful things that we are very fortunate to have you interested in our community. It's time for Paducah to move forward. This is really exciting to me. We'll be studying this more over the next two weeks, and I'd encourage the public, if you have questions, to shoot them to us, but we're, we're excited about this development. Thank you for coming, for joining us tonight as well.
Yeah, thank you guys so much.
Okay, great. Well, I appreciate all the work that you all have put forward, and the team and the commissioners have spent a lot of time and hours reviewing the negotiations. I do believe that we've been very responsive to the risk management. I think that is exactly the right phrase that we should be using, that we have put together a great development agreement for risk management for the city. I want to say a big thank you to Tom Quiller at KKHB for helping us write this agreement, for making sure that we're on track with keeping the city protected. And I want to say, Bill and Barry, you know, I have only been the mayor for three and a half years, so I haven't been involved in that many of these negotiations, but I appreciate your willingness, number one, listen to our community's concerns. When you brought this forward originally, this, this whole block was taken up with development because at that time you didn't know what you didn't know. And as soon as we told you that we were concerned about public parking in our community, you jumped at it quickly and started being creative and solving for some of those concerns. So I want to say thank you. I do, you mentioned partnerships. I do believe that's how you all operate. I have seen that firsthand, and I think this development agreement is a really good signal that you all are partners in this and you want to be into the future as well. I know that you understand that our community and some people in our community are concerned. They're concerned that we are taking away some nostalgia, that we are no longer going to be this small quaint little historic town, but I know that you all have all the intentions in the world to honor our history as you think through this project. I want to share with the public really quick, one small tiny example of that, and that was when, Barry, we were having a meeting with some community members, and they mentioned the very important cobblestones that the Boy Scouts protected up near the corner of Water Street and Broadway, and your team immediately started brainstorming on how we were not going to touch those, and in fact, we were going to make them even more obvious how important they were to the history of our community. So thank you all so much. Anything else you want to add, Bill or Barry, before we wrap this up? Of course, you know, we're not voting tonight. This was just the introduction. And then we have some public comments that I want to bring up, but I want to give you the chance to make any final comments.
Yeah, I would just make one, one final comment, and it, I guess follows up with the comments you just made, Katie, that when, when we work on a project or in a, in a community, we want the project to be successful, both for us as a, as a private entity, obviously our, our financing partners want it to be successful, but we also want it to be successful for the community. And I think our, I'm, I'm proud, I won't speak for Bill, but I think he is too, that the, the projects that we tend to work on, and they, they are a little bit more difficult, they take longer than any of us would like, but at the end of the day, people in the community are proud of the project. We're proud, the mayor, the council's proud, the community is proud, and it's, it's, it helps celebrate the community. And the reason I say that particularly in Paducah is that you have a wonderful historic district, you've got a wonderful waterfront, you've got a terrific arts, arts district, you're making improvements through the bill grant on the waterfront, which will bring more tourists, more people right at that City Block site. And while we all know parking is important, that site where all of those areas come together and where people will, more people will be disembarking from cruise ships, hopefully, should be something that basically says, welcome to Paducah. We're proud of our community. This is an active, vibrant place, and the, the, the City Block right now doesn't say that. And that's not to say it's not important for other reasons, but we believe it's just a tremendous opportunity to pull together all of the things that, that make Paducah and downtown Paducah special. We want to be part of that. We want to help make sure it's respectful of everything that's happening downtown. But at the end of the day, we want people to, to say, this is, this is the heart of our community, and want people to be there doing a variety of things on a 24/7 basis. And we think what we've all put together now gives you guys the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Barry.
Mayor, I just want to say thank you very much. I really have appreciated your team in working through this process, and I think our, our team enjoyed working on this project because of the people we've been working with. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, I'm going to bring up a few public comments, just to remind everyone who's participating. We have three minutes for you to make comments, and I'm just going to go in order of, I think, how we receive them, or how they're on my spreadsheet. So first up, we have Dewan Thomas.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so thank you for bringing me on to this. I'm really speaking for the community. I've been outside with them as they've been in a gathering against this parking lot sale. And, you know, one thing that I want to say, this isn't about nostalgia, this is about the heart of our, our community and what the people want. I don't think it should be up to five people on a decision that's going to impact our whole community. I think it should be up to the majority of our 24 hours in population. And then also, it seems like this is a giveaway for the price that y'all are giving us away for, for $293,000, when there's lots of that size that sell for millions in other areas. So that's a big question that I have there. And also, we don't oppose the business opportunity, but why can't we move this to a better location in our TIF district? Take away the parking spaces that the people don't want gone, and the barbs on the river, that's a major spot for that there as well, so that's going to interrupt that. One major event that our city holds. So yeah, I'm just really confused about some of the decisions that are being made with that, you know, and I believe that the people's voices should be heard on this issue, and it shouldn't just be up to the commission and the mayor when making this decision. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dewan. Victoria Tera also signed up to, to make comments on this project tonight. Victoria, are you still there?
I am here. Great. Well, thank you, everyone. Again, Katie Ax, you gave an amazing presentation. You are so good at that. I am in favor of this project, and it's so thoughtful. It's not like we're in the movie Field of Dreams, and someone woke up one day and said, oh, my gosh, if we build this, people are going to come. No, this is calculated and thoughtful, and I believe that I, that you're going to make it what is going to have people come. We're going to revitalize a crummy parking lot that was once the heart of our city, and let's make it the heart of our city again. So I'm excited about it, and I hope that everyone else is too. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Next up is, on the list is Yvonne Gray, and I think I saw her get off earlier. I'm not sure if she's gotten back on. I don't think she has.
No, ma'am, she is not back on.
Thank you. And Ms. Ruth Baggett, are you on here still?
Unmuted, okay.
There you go.
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, I, I'm so excited about this project. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to say welcome to our town, to all of those riverboat tourists that come in. It is, it's beautiful, it's exciting, and it will really put an injection of vibrates into our downtown. I'm a, I'm a Padukan, and a lot of my friends are against giving up that parking lot. They do not want to give up that parking lot. So I have an idea that, that involves city property, the roads. We have some underutilized roads that are one-way, and half of the road could be turned into parking spaces, especially if we were to use the slanted parking spaces as opposed to a horizontal space. So this, this kind of space. Okay? And so, for example, a lot of people are worried about handicap parking. If you took waterfront street between Kentucky and Broadway, and you, half of that road is not being utilized, so half of that could be turned into the slanted parking, and that all could be for handicap. Then the handicap people would be close to the riverfront for the fireworks, and then they would also be close to, within one block of, let's say, the Yaizer, which is, seems to be the hub of, of the heart and the, of the lower, of downtown. Also, Jefferson is one-way street from Water Street to Fifth Street. We could take half of Jefferson and create those slanted parking lots. We could also do it on Second Street as well, between Broadway and over to Monroe, to the flood wall. So it, within that area, it would be quite, it would be, we could really add a lot of parking spaces, four, four rows that would be within one block of the heart of, let's say, Yaizer, two rows that would be within two blocks, two rows that would be within three blocks, and two rows that would be within four blocks, from my calculations on this. And of course, it would need study and approval, but I think that Jefferson is really not traveled on very much between Water Street and Fifth Street. We could easily turn that into one lane and then utilize really close parking to the heart of the, of the downtown. And I think, you know, people wouldn't mind walking one or two blocks. Be worth it. You're welcome.
Okay, next up is Michael Tera.
Hi. First of all, guys, thanks so much for all your hard work. It's, it's really amazing what you guys do and how you pulled this together. And in the 12 years Victoria and I have been here in Paducah, we have seen so many tries at, at this sort of comprehensive planning and execution, and, and you guys have got it nailed this time. You have such an excellent team in the staff and, and our elected officials, so you're right there. it's time to old, an old saw. The best time to plant a tree, of course, was 20 years ago, but the second best time to plant a tree is today. And I think that this is that tree. This program, you've got an excellent partner who's got a proven track record, who's going to bring resources that we may not have locally to, to play. It's going to restore to a former use, historically, the central commercial block of our downtown. It's going to generate revenue in perpetuity every year for our city. It's going to generate new jobs at all income levels. It's going to support job creation in short term during the construction phase and the development phase. And it's going to bring and create a durable resource for our community and for our children. So I'm in big support of this project. I think that Katie's presentation was stunning, as usual. Lovely job. And we should proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right, next up on this project, we have Mary Byrne.
I just want to say, and I probably have said this in the past, that I'm totally for the City Block project. I think that it's an incredible opportunity that a developer comes in and wants to plop $20 million into the downtown of Paducah. I, I just think that it's going to be wonderful. I see this as being kind of a keystone, well, like what you would have a, a shopping center, you have a keystone big store, then it brings all the people in that go to all the other stores. And I see this development and City Block as being that keystone. And I, I think that we've driven around a couple of times helping Katie count parking spots, and I, I just don't think the parking is going to be a problem. Plus, when they see what wonderful things has come, instead of that 40-some spaces, I think people will be really pleased. And I, I didn't really, I didn't sign up last meeting to talk about the Wellness Center because I didn't realize that it, the possibility was... Center because I didn't realize that it, the possibility was, that it was going to be put on hold. And I, I guess I just want to make sure, um, that the commissioners all know that you, you were elected for a two-year term, not for a year and a half term. And I would just really hope that this, uh, is not put on pause, but that we, we embrace this and, um, uh, go forward now that this opportunity, uh, has presented itself to us. So, um, we need some leadership here, and I, I do hope that the commissioners, um, vote to go forward with this. Uh, so thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, next up, we have Todd Bloom.
Okay, hello, hi. Um, wow, I've been listening to everyone and I didn't know exactly what I was going to say. Uh, I am a business owner downtown. I would, I have skin in this game. I see this development as something so special and, and so unique, and especially at a time during a pandemic. They're still coming to us and they want to invest in Paducah. They want to put their money, 21 million of private money, not city money, into Paducah. Now, I know everyone's on mute, but I want you to say this out loud. Parking lot, 21 million in private investment. When you say it out loud, there's not really, you want that $21 million investment. It's going to help my business. I've spoken to many of the downtown business owners and they want this too because they know that, I mean, especially after seeing this presentation, that it's going to help every business downtown in these buildings that are empty. Other businesses are going to see the value of it and they're going to say, "Wow, look at what's going on downtown." Paducah needs to see success. They need to see people walking, people dining, people staying in the hotels, uh, cars parked up and down the street. And this is, this is possible. And I mean, these guys, they, they built the Muhammad Ali Center. They, they built the Slugger, the Slugger Museum. That, and they see something in Paducah. I think they see what I've always seen in Paducah. I love this place and I think that it would be a disservice, especially at a time right now, to kick this down the road or even not say yes to it. So I, I look at all the information that you have, you've done your due diligence. I mean, everything is in place. Let's, let's grab this and let's go forward. Um, it's going to help me, it's going to help the other businesses, it's going to bring in new business. And these guys are invested already with the time they've put in. And this, I mean, the, the staff, the city staff has put their time in, they, everyone sees this. Don't kick it down the road. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. All right, George Bray.
Thanks, Mary and commissioners. I'm going to be the, the lone person dissenting opinion, looks like maybe tonight, but the decision, I believe, to sell the City Block to Wayland, uh, is ill-timed and, and we are going to own the outcome of an agreement negotiated amid, uh, the uncertainty of, of our current health, health crisis. And this is why I believe it's ill-timed. There's overwhelming uncertainty of city-state and TIP revenues. Any financial assumptions that we made prior to COVID about the TIP or this project, I really believe are off the table. There's, uh, uncertainty about potential remediation costs that the city's going to be responsible for, and we are already looking at potential significant sunk costs related to another project, and we don't need more sunk costs, that is a burden to the taxpayers. That's a burden we shouldn't have to absorb. So I say slow down and ensure that the city is being more fiscally responsible. Transparency, addressing this agenda item in a virtual meeting without the opportunity to have citizens provide comments in person in an open format, I don't believe meets the requirements for transparency. So let's slow down and figure out how to provide more transparency, um, and exactly how this project will benefit the city and how we mitigate, uh, make sure we mitigate our risk. In the area of competition, providing exclusive rights to a firm without the opportunity to listen to competing projects or opportunities for development, I don't believe is a good business approach. And I know there are local investors and developers interested in a significant project when the timing is right, and one of those projects is considering a hotel that's closer to the convention center, which is badly, badly needed. So I think we should slow down and consider all options. And I believe we need to negotiate, uh, a better agreement. I've read the agreement and I certainly have questions. Is the property being sold over five years? Is it secured, uh, by a mortgage? How was the fair market value established? Why is the land valued equally as parking and green space, green space versus revenue-producing? Why should the city have to pay construction of facilities and remediation costs on the land we retain? And what is the nature of the protection that we have if Wayland decides not to move forward for some reason? Let's slow down and consider that we are in the driver's seat and this is the most valuable piece of property that we have in the city. Now, I know Wayland is a fine development firm, and if this project is attractive, they will stay interested. Three out of four commissioners will not be back, and the right thing to do is to do a proper evaluation that takes time and allow the next board of commissioners to make major decisions of this nature and not saddle all of us with any project decided amid all of this uncertainty. Some say slowing down is stifling project. Thank you. Thank you for your time. My time is up, so I'm done.
Yeah, you're muted, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, and thank you, Commissioner Watkins, for paying attention to the clock. Uh, thank you all so much for showing up and providing your input. Uh, we have received a lot of emails as well, uh, from the community, uh, for the project, some against the project, so continue to send your opinions. Uh, that does matter to us. We want to hear your voice. We want to hear, uh, what you are thinking about this project. Yes, it's unfortunate that we are virtual, uh, but we are trying to keep everyone safe during this time as well. Um, and I firmly believe we can do both things at the same time. Uh, we will have this on the agenda two weeks from now, and, uh, we will be bringing it, um, to, for a vote, uh, formally. I thank you again, Bill and Barry. Commissioner Watkins, I believe you had something you wanted to bring up before I move on, and I want to give you that opportunity if you would still like to make it.
Is now the appropriate time to make that motion, bring it forward?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, I didn't understand about the clock. I, I didn't say anything and didn't pay any attention to how much time he had taken, so I, it wasn't me.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was.
No, no, it wasn't me at all. I wanted to hear the rest of his comments. Okay, I, I've got a motion, uh, I'll read first and then just a few brief comments about the proposal. I move that the Board of Commissioners table the ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing and approving a City Block Development Agreement between the City of Paducah and Wayland Ventures Development LLC for development of a boutique hotel, parking, open space, and mixed-use residential building located at the City Block bounded by Second Street, Broadway, North Water Street, and Jefferson Street, declaring the real property to be surplus property, authorizing the associated property transfer, and execution of all documents relating to same. So, uh, I have just a few comments to make about it. I've always supported the Old Riverside Hospital Lot as the best location for the next hotel in that area. We need to anchor the convention center with a hotel if we are ever going to land the conventions necessary to make the center profitable. After talking to and listening to many people on this, I feel like we need to table this vote to proceed forward at this time on the City Block project. We don't need to rush this. Now is not the time to try to build a hotel. It was announced yesterday that the transient room tax is down 32% from budget forecasts already. Customer occupancy in our restaurants has been reduced to 25% of capacity. This pandemic is only getting worse. We don't know yet the damage it will do to our economy. And I also have some concerns about, uh, provisions in the agreement as proposed, uh, or lack of, to protect the city. There's no termination provision. Once, uh, the deeds to the land is transferred, if things go south, and I hope they don't, it's a good company, but if, what if they do, we're going to have a hard time getting that land back. They will own it. And we know, as has been mentioned, there's actually two parties. We know that another party is looking at a project in this area also that would actually be a better location, uh, than this one. So I think we need to wait until this pandemic is over and explore that possibility, which would be a much more attractive location and development. Lastly, the parking is still an issue for a lot of people on this location. So for this, these reasons, I propose that we table the vote to move forward with the City Block project at this time. We should at least wait until the pandemic is under control. I do support another downtown convention center area hotel. Uh, I think it's needed and, and I certainly, uh, support growth and development in Paducah. But I do believe we can get a better location. I do believe we can get a better agreement, but I, like everyone else, want to see Paducah grow. Thank you.
Commissioner, you do not have a second on your motion. Does anyone want to offer?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes. Any comments about Commissioner Watkins' motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make, uh, a few. First of all, is that okay? Can you hear me? We're all good? Okay. First of all, Wayland is a fine company. The, the work that they've done speaks for itself. Guys, uh, with integrity, no problem with them at all. This is more about Paducah and the folks that live here. And we've heard from, uh, a lot of, uh, tonight, some comments in, in favor of the development of the City Block. Uh, and I've heard, I'm sure you all have too, uh, countless folks are saying, uh, that's not the right spot. I would love this, and 90% of this, if it was maybe a half a block or a block down the street. Um, it's amazing to me when we talk about our businesses downtown benefiting from the activity, what we're doing at the, uh, what we're working on with the City Block grant. There, in the last, the last couple of years, the activity along Broadway has increased. More folks are coming downtown already. So, uh, when people look at Paducah, it's not a Nashville, it's not Louisville, it's not St. Louis, it's Paducah. We have our own unique vibe here, and I think that that, that particular block where it is right now is the heart of our downtown. So if you look at it right now, what's happening is, it's being developed around that. Uh, when folks get off the boat and they come to Paducah, uh, we're, we're already saying we're proud of our town. Um, and I, I get, I get what he was saying, but we're proud of Paducah where it is right now. Are we, are we just satisfied to stay there? No, but this particular block where, uh, Wayland wants to, this is, this is where they want to go, I get it, but it's up to us to decide, you know what? Uh, can you take that and move it down a half a block or a block and develop that area? The businesses on Broadway, folks come, they, they take a visit, they get out of town, they turn their head, they want to walk to where they want to get to. Uh, so, uh, I just feel like, uh, our town is, is unique and it's festivals, um, and the things that we have going on, we understand, as being a local people, that that lot is going to be occupied certain times throughout the year. We're local, we get it. We know we can't park there or anywhere close there to Monday. But I really don't think the parking is the, is the, is the biggest pushback on this. I really think it's the ambiance of, of where that lot is and how people are drawn to that spot. And if you look around, things are developing around, and Wayland wasn't the first, uh, I don't think anybody said that, but I'm just saying it for the record. Uh, the, the hotel right now, next to the, uh, the, uh, the convention center, you know, we're, we're, we're scrapping trying to figure out what we're going to do with this guy. These, these people showed up and said, "You know what? Hey, we want to do business here in Paducah." So that, why was that? Paducah drew that developer here, just like it drew Wayland here. And what I'm saying is, I don't think that we have to be in a crazy rush, and if we are going to develop something, not that spot. I think that's what our folks are trying to, uh, convey to us.
Any other comments from the commissioners? I, I would, I want to point out, Commissioner Watkins, you've, you've brought up a couple times the concern about the termination pieces of this, and while the word termination is not explicitly written in this agreement, uh, any, our attorney can very well help you, um, to understand that the risk management approach to this development agreement is very well done. Uh, in addition, you mentioned if someone were to want to sell, if Wayland wanted to sell the property, we would have no control over it, and that's absolutely incorrect. Uh, there is a section in this agreement entitled, uh, Assignment. It's section, uh, at the very end of the document, 6.6 Assignment. I know that our team has conferred this with, uh, our attorney as well. If Wayland were to want to sell the property or give it up for another developer, the city would have to approve that, and this agreement would go along with that as well. So, um, oh, sorry.
I did not say that at all. I said, if the project went south, that they were not able to perform, if they had a financial problem like Gencana perhaps, I'm sure they won't, but you never know. Everybody was high on Gencana. Uh, now there's $13 million of debt held down there that, and no one to pay it, and all these contractors, actually, it's a lot more than that now. But, uh, what I said was, if the, the project didn't work, if it went south, they would own the property. They would have the deeds to the property, and that's a concern. I didn't say they might want to sell it to someone else.
Oh, I heard you say both things. Uh, I was about to address the other one, so I apologize if I misunderstood. I, I guess it's important to point out, um, the assignments regardless. I apologize to that. I, I will say that, um, again, uh, from my perspective and in talking to, uh, Tom and the people who helped put this together, the way that we manage risk in this agreement was all around, uh, holding Wayland accountable to specific milestones. And that is to make sure that before that land is conveyed, that this project is, is very confident, that there is financial, uh, documentation that says financial evidence in this document to make sure that those things do go forward. Uh, that is very different than the Gencana story. I don't know if we want to get into that necessarily here, but that is very different than the due diligence that was done in Mayfield, uh, with the Gencana story. Um, and so I do think it's important that, uh, maybe individually as commissioners, you know, we, um, ask attorneys and, and talk to, to people about this. You know, I'll tell you, I respect each and every one of you, and I will continue to do that regardless if we land on the same side of this project or not. That is okay with me. But I am the only one sitting in the elected body right now that has spent over a million dollars in downtown, and I have put my money where my mouth is, and I'm invested in downtown Paducah. And I like Todd Bloom, I like Brian Shipwell, I like other developers who have done the same thing as I have downtown, are very supportive of this project because we believe that it's a future project that's going to impact our lives significantly. You know, COVID is a very important, very real public health and economic pandemic for our community. There is no doubt about that. But from a business perspective, when you have a developer saying, "We still want to invest $21 million in your community," I just don't understand how we would say no to that at a time when we are going to wake up in two years from now, three years from now, and need more economic investment than we've ever had in the history of our city. And this is it. It's staring us in the face. We have willing partners that are ready to go. We have willing partners that are ready to go. So those are my comments. Commissioner Watkins, I do highly respect you. I appreciate you bringing this forward. I do disagree with it. And, and those are my comments for tonight. Anyone has anything to add?
Let, let me mention, you mentioned risk management, and I hope you're right. I, I hope that the city is not being put at risk in any way, shape, or form, but the attorneys that I've listened to and got counsel on it had some concerns about a, a lack of more protections for the city of Paducah and in these areas that I mentioned, and that's why I brought it up.
Thank you.
I wanna make one clarification on the Gen Cona situation in Paducah. That was a private sale between Gen Cona and AmerisourceBergen. AmerisourceBergen Company left Paducah, and that building was empty, and Gen Cona bought it. There's no debt that the city has with that building. So I wanna make sure that's not confused when you mentioned thirteen million or whatever it was on there.
Yeah.
That is not.
Graves County Economic Development looks like.
That is another, that is another location. That was a private sale between two companies in Paducah, Gen Cona and AmerisourceBergen.
Yeah, I, I agree. You're exactly right. I only brought it up because it's an issue in Graves County because they didn't do their due diligence and put in some provisions for protection. I just wanna make sure Paducah's protected, that's all. The only point I was trying to make. I appreciate that.
Yes, I just don't want any confusion on that part. It's unfortunate that we lost AmerisourceBergen, and I hope that we can fill that, that building will be filled back up, and I know Geped will be working on that as well.
Sure.
Any other comments before we call roll on Commissioner Watkins' motion?
I'm excited about it again. I think, I plan to sit down with the attorney and make sure we are prepared to go over the whole thing, to make sure I do understand. But it's, it looks like it's time for Paducah to move forward, move forward.
I will say, I have not talked to friends in Louisville, but I have talked to friends across the state that are familiar with Wayland and Barry and Bill, from friends in Paducah that you know and that you mentioned tonight, and a lot of friends in Owensboro who are very complimentary of you and the work that you've done in other communities. So thank you for your interest.
I'd like to make one last comment if I could, Mayor, so no one misunderstands. I'm not opposed to development. I think it's wonderful. Anybody wants to spend twenty-one million dollars in downtown Paducah, I think that's fantastic. The biggest issue I have, and I spent a lot of time thinking about this, and there's a lot of pluses on each side, but the biggest thing, like Commissioner Abraham, is the location. There are two other spots that other developers are interested in, that are within a quarter of a mile of this spot. And if, if we move forward with this one, then they're not gonna be interested. There's not enough room for three or four hotels in downtown Paducah. So my, I guess my biggest concern and argument was, why don't we hold off a little bit and see what other options we have? We might have a better option. That's the big thing. And then, in addition, smaller concerns. People are concerned about the parking, losing the parking law, but the big issue for me is the location and getting the best deal that we can for the citizens of Paducah. But whatever happens, you know, it'll, it'll be exciting.
Yeah, and Commissioner Watkins, I just wanna make sure, though, it's clear, we do have an item on the agenda tonight to vote on an extension with Lynn Gate Hospitality, who is our developer for our Holiday Inn. And so I'm not quite sure it's exactly accurate to say that if this project moves forward with Wayland, that they're not interested anymore because they've asked us for an extension for an opportunity. So, you know, I think sometimes we maybe don't quite believe in ourselves in the sense that there could be multiple developers, and there are frankly, right now, on this agenda tonight, there are multiple developers who are interested in developing our city. So let's believe in ourselves a little bit. We're talking about two big things tonight that could go a long way. You know, we always talk about Owensboro, and I'm not a big fan of comparing us to them because we're not them, frankly. But they have dreamed and thought about the potential. They now have four hotels going into their downtown with their convention center. So, you know, all ships rise with the tide, and I believe that's very true. And I appreciate you all. We'll be talking about this in the two weeks from now when we take our vote, so we can continue. I hope, again, we'll continue to do our own due diligence on this, and I'm always available if you guys wanna chat about it. I'm gonna.
Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Right before, right before we go, I am, I, I am so proud of Paducah, and the potential that we have here in this, in this town is unbelievable. But I do, I do get the fact that developers will do their due diligence, that seems to be the word these days, and they will come and they will scout out, and they will look at a, a piece of a, a partial property, and if they think they can make a go at it, then that's what they're gonna push for. I get that. That's, that's the way you do business. So, but as you come to a, those of us who live here and we're looking at where they wanna put, where they wanna put that, that project, it means a little bit more to the locals possibly than it does for the developer. And so when, where we are right now, I think this is what you're, this is what we're experiencing. Not that the developer is, is, is some old company, that's, that's not them at all. You mentioned that the developing, the development, what's going on here in Paducah, I, I really believe is gonna continue. We're gonna get through this, this pandemic. We'll adjust, but our city, where we're moving to, I think we're gonna have more developers knocking on our door, trying to get in to what's going on in Paducah, and more centrally, downtown, where this is a draw. It's a corridor from Carson Center to the, right now where the hotel is. In between there, all within a tiff, we're gonna see some substantial development. So I do think it's, it's a great opportunity for us at Paducah, but I think this particular project, if it's a block down the road, will still enhance our downtown on Broadway.
Let's have the question.
Sorry?
Let's have the question.
All right, let's call the question. City Clerk, would you call one, please?
Commissioner Abraham?
Yes.
Commissioner McElroy?
What, what were we doing?
This is a motion to table the city block development agreement.
Yes.
Commissioner McElroy?
No.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Mayor Harless?
No.
Okay, we are going to move on. Phil and Barry, if you wanna jump off, you are welcome to. Thank you for joining us. You might have already had a chance, there you go. Take care, and we'll talk to you soon. Thank you all.
I'll see you guys.
All right, let's jump back up on our agenda and catch ourselves up. We are now at item, I believe, four A. And I'm gonna ask the city clerk to read the item recommended.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final report.
Anyone got a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Tracy, do you want to, oh, this is for adoption. We heard about this last time. Does the commission have any questions for? Ms. Tracy, we have lost Commissioner McElroy. She's going to be with her family after those discussions, so it will just be the four of us. If anyone has any questions for this item? If not, I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy, just to make sure. Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And I will ask the city clerk to read item four B, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt. Contracting Company LLC in order to extend the contract and include the contract pricing for pavement markings. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute change order number one with Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC to extend the contract to December thirty-first, 2020, and include contract pricing for pavement markings for the city of Paducah's resurfacing program in accordance with the price list in the change order.
So moved? Second. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Murphy about this item? All right, we heard about this last week. If not, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins? Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And I'll ask the city clerk to read item four C, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and approving the transfer of municipally-owned real properties located throughout Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, to the Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency pursuant to the provisions of the city ordinance number ninety-eight dash eight dash fifty-nine twenty-seven, establishing the agency within Paducah. This ordinance, in this ordinance, the city of Paducah authorizes the transfer of city-owned real properties located at various locations throughout McCracken County, Kentucky, to Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency pursuant to the provisions of the city's ordinance establishing the agency. The ordinance further authorizes the mayor of Paducah, Kentucky, to execute and deliver a general warranty deed of conveyance of the real properties.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? I know Mr. Hedges was at our meeting last time, talking about some projects that he's working on and the need for some property. Anyone have any questions? Okay, if not, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to read, or to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And I will ask the city clerk to read item five A, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty-twenty-B, in the aggregate principal amount of two million nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, subject to a permitted adjustment increasing the size of the bonds by up to two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, or decreasing the size of the bonds by any amount, for the purpose of refunding the outstanding city of Paducah, Kentucky, general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty-ten-B, maturing on or after June first, 2021, the proceeds of which were used to refund the original cost of financing the expansion of the Julian Carroll Convention Center and the construction of the Four Rivers Center for the Performing Arts. Authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of an amended and restated interlocal cooperation agreement by and among the city of Paducah, Kentucky, the county of McCracken, Kentucky, the Paducah Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Paducah-McCracken County Convention Center Corporation, and the McCracken County Sports Tourism Commission in connection with the issuance of bonds, approving the, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating a bond payment fund, maintaining the heretofore established sinking fund, authorizing acceptance of the bids of the bond purchaser, of the bond purchaser for the purchase of the bonds, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of bonds and the planned refunding and repealing inconsistent ordinances. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds designated as series twenty-twenty-B in the appropriate, approximate principal amount of two million nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars by the city of Paducah. The bonds are to be issued for the purpose of refunding the city's outstanding general obligation refunding bond, series twenty-ten-B, maturing on or after June first, 2021, the proceeds of which were used to refund the city's general obligation bonds, series two-thousand-and-one convention and art center projects, the proceeds of which were used to finance the cost of the expansion of the Julian Carroll Convention Center and to construct the Four Rivers Center for the performing arts. The ordinance further authorizes the execution and delivery by the city of the amended and restated interlocal cooperation agreement by and among the city, the county of McCracken, Kentucky, the Paducah-McCracken County Convention Center Corporation, the Paducah Convention and Visitors Bureau, and the McCracken County Sports Tourism Commission. Pursuant to the ordinance and the interlocal agreement, certain transient room taxes to be received from the bureau and certain county payments will be pledged as additional security for the bonds. Provisions are made in the ordinance for the payment of the bonds and the security therefore, for the application of the proceeds of the bonds, for the establishment of the bond payment fund, for the maintenance of the previously established sinking fund, for certain covenants of the city with respect to the bonds, and for the execution such additional instruments as shall be necessary to accomplish the plan of refunding. The bonds are, are to be sold at public competitive sale and shall mature or be subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption in varying amounts on June first of each of the years, 2021 through 2026. The bonds pledge the full faith and credit of the city, and provision is made for the collection of tax to be, to pay the principal of an interest on the bonds, subject to the certain credits as provided by the ordinance in the interlocal agreement. As required by KRS eighty-three A point oh-six-oh, the following section seven of the ordinance is set forth in its entirety. The bond shall be further full general obligation of the city and for the payment of bonds and the interest thereon. The full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city are hereby pledged for the prompt payment thereof. During the period the bonds are outstanding, there shall be, and there hereby is levied on all the taxable property in the city, in addition to all other taxes without limitation as to rate, a direct tax annually in the amount sufficient to pay the principal of the interest on the bonds, when as do it being hereby found and determined that current tax rates are within all applicable limitations. The tax shall be and is hereby ordered, computed, certified, levied, and extended upon the tax duplicate and collected by the same officers in the same manner, and at the same time that taxes for general purposes for each of the years are certified, extended, and collected. The tax shall be placed before and in preference to all other items and for the full amount thereof provided. However, that in each year, to the extent that the other lawfully available funds of the city are available for the payment of the bonds, including amounts available under the interlocal agreement and are appropriate for such purpose, the amount of such direct tax upon all taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amount of such other funds so available and appropriated.
So moved?
Good job, Lindsay. Second.
I have a feeling, like, listen, I had to go find Mark Rawlings because I just knew he was over there smiling like, ha, 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 you have to read that. Oh, me. Mr. Perkins, can you, Mark, do you have something to add?
Let me just start out here, then we'll get Mark in on this.
Okay.
We've, we've got a couple of guys, Mark Franklin with Dinsmore &amp; Shaw, Bond Counselor, he's been patiently waiting for the last several hours, along with Mark Rawlings with Bird Company. So I'm gonna make this as brief as I possibly can, and that Mark Rawlings chiming in, and both guys are on board, you can ask any kind of questions you want. Basically, we floated these bonds, the city of Paducah floated them in two thousand and one, it was a twenty-five-year bond issued, and as Lindsay mentioned in detail, basically what we did was we rolled nine million dollars, three went to the conventions, the Carson Center, and nine and six went to the convention deck, was there to build that. Then in two thousand and ten, we, we did a refinancing, and we issued the twenty-ten-B issue. We refinanced about six point seven million dollars of that, and we ended up with a savings of interest at that time, the life of the bond of nine hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in savings. And so what we, we're now in a position now to do it again. There's only five, five years left of the bond issue, but we proposed to refinance this at this point in time. We believe we can save another hundred and seventy thousand dollars. One more thing I need to point out, and then I'll let Mark Franklin chime in. This is not funded with city tax money per se. It's funded with bed, transit room tax or bed tax that the county collects, and by law, that's what that money's obligated to be used for. And so we've been paying on this for a long, long time. We continue to pay, but the city and the county are in partnership on this, and it has worked out marvelously well, and hopefully it'll be paid off of any problem by the year twenty-twenty-six. This is not new money, this is refinancing of existing debt. Mark, go ahead.
Thank you, John. So this refinancing, I think, couldn't come at a better time. I think someone mentioned earlier that transit room tax collections were down thirty-two percent. So anything that we can do right now to refinance that debt and reduce the payments so that we rely less on that tax is. so that we rely less on that tax is certainly a positive. If we could sell bonds today, you know, we would be looking at reducing the interest rate on these bonds from about a 3.16% down to about 1.6%, and that's all-inclusive of all the costs of issuance. John mentioned the savings in total of about $170,000 on an annual basis, that's about $25,000 to $30,000 per year through fiscal 2026. We're not extending the debt any longer than the existing obligation. So we're very thankful that interest rates have cooperated and are giving us this opportunity to do this. Hopefully, they'll need to hang in there a little bit longer. From a timing perspective, the Attorney General's Office must approve the amended interlocal agreement, and they require 30 days to do so. So we're looking at probably late August or early September before we can actually lock these interest rates in. But I'm very optimistic, I don't see any particular reason for rates to go up. So the financing looks very good, and as far as the interlocal agreement goes, the amendment essentially is, one, correcting the name of the Paducah Convention and Visitors Bureau, but also, more importantly, it's redefining bonds to include the definition of the refunding bonds. And that's essentially all that it is intended to do in the amendment, so it should be no problem getting that approved as well. But this is hopefully not a very controversial topic since we're talking about saving some money, so I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I'm just curious about the life of that bond. Are we adding on to it at all in this refinancing? Okay, so we're still going to have it paid off in the same time limit, it's just going to be at a reduced interest rate? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
That's great. Very good timing. Mr. Franklin, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, you know, I would say that the legal structure of the deal is the same as the existing deal, really, we're just adding in the, making clear that the interlocal agreement includes the refunding bonds, and I appreciate everyone's help. It's nice to actually see everyone's face. I've seen your names for several years now and worked with the city on several other issues, so it's nice to actually get to see people even if it's not in person or the internet, it's still a nice opportunity for me. So thank you for allowing me to attend virtually and get to say hello to everyone, I appreciate it.
I thought the same thing when I saw your name, I was like, "Wow, I know that name, I've heard it over and over again." And sometimes I would think Mark Rawlings was Mark Franklin, and I had to really figure it out after a while, but I got it straight, I think.
Just direct it to the Marx, and we'll get to taking care of it.
That's right.
The team of the Marx. Any Commissioners have any questions about this tonight?
Good deal.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your work on this, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the next item, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read item 5B. I think, is that where I am?
Yep. A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 2020-6-8641, entitled 'An Ordinance Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for the Fiscal Year July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.' This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021, as adopted by ordinance number 2020-6-8641, be amended by the following reappropriations: To transfer $141,000 from the FY 2020, FY 2021 Fleet Trust Fund fund balance to the Fleet Trust Fund.
So moved. Second. Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is basically a repeat of last year, the Board of Commissioners actually authorized this back in FY 20, but before we pulled the trigger on it in the spring, that's when COVID-19 hit, so I wanted to kind of push the pause button on that. But at the same time, we thought we would pull the trigger before the end of FY 20, we did not. We actually let, we actually let the ordinance expire, so the budget is now over, so now we need to end this budget because we didn't include it in FY 21's budget, but it's the same thing that we did last year, we just want to be able to get it included in this budget so we can actually spend the money out to buy the green equipment perfection part.
And this sounds like, from my understanding, that we're actually using funds from our Fleet Trust Fund, which is designed to kind of be a holding place for funds for things like equipment, vehicles, things like that, is that correct?
You are 100% correct, we use that money to replace our fleets or equipment upper reps.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the Commission? No? Okay, I'm going to move on, ask the city clerk to read item 5C, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Amending Section 126-76 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky pertaining to electronic signs in the MU and A1 districts. This ordinance is summarized as follows: This ordinance accepts and adopts the recommendation of the Paducah Planning Commission to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky to allow electronic signs in the MU and A1 zones under similar standards as the B2 district, with one additional standard proposed which prohibits changing of the message between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. to prevent any flashing during sleep hours.
So moved.
Second.
Tamara, Ms. Tracy, are you on here?
Yes, I am, and hopefully I am not going to do the jiggy-jaggy kind of presentation like last time. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're clear.
Great. This is a text amendment to the sign regulations specifically to and regarding electronic business signs in the MU and A1 districts. The MU is the mixed-use district, it's a relatively small or rarely-used district, mainly focused on the western end of our community. And in making this amendment, the Planning Commission went forward with the proposal to basically mimic the standards that apply to the B2. In addition thereto, they added one additional standard, and that is pertaining to the hours of operation so that during the night, there would not be flashing a sign. The Planning Commission...
Are you all on pause too?
I'm not.
Okay. I see a lot of people are.
It looks like Chino had a slight error, give us a second.
Oh, okay. We lost a lot of people at one time. Commissioner Watkins and Commissioner Wilson, you're both just like so quiet, I didn't even know if you were like paused or if you were still active.
I will say I've had to leave the meeting several times tonight to get back in, so...
Commissioner Watkins, I think you're muted.
I am, yeah. You were saying we were quiet, or you didn't know if we were paused, I said, "or asleep." It's a little past my bedtime, but I'm trying to hang in.
We're almost there, we're almost there. That's funny. I think we lost Commissioner Abraham for sure, I saw him let him leave, I think that was a network situation at City Hall, it looks like. We lost a bunch of people at City Hall.
Is it just us?
It is right now.
I guess we can still do business, right?
We can do business with the three of us, although I don't have all those motions that Lindsay has.
Oh, we lost her too?
We did.
Oh, wow.
I actually think, Lindsay's coming back in, I have it printed out if we need it.
Okay.
I am sorry, I got dropped from the meeting, and I am back now, can you hear me?
Yes, I can see you and hear you now, I think Dan was just telling us about what happened. Dan, was that you?
Yeah, Chino, well, it's Cam, but Chino is checking the server side of things.
Okay. Are we still live?
Yes.
Okay.
We can take a break if you would like, I guess, until we remedy this, I can put up a slideshow.
Well, it looks like if Commissioner Abraham can get back in, then we're going to be okay. Do you think it's a City Hall problem?
Chino says yes.
Okay. Commissioner Watkins and Commissioner Wilson, would you like, we're basically just hearing introductions for the remainder of the meeting? Are you all comfortable with continuing?
How much longer we got?
We have three more introductions and then the typical comments from the City Commissioner, City Manager. Here comes Commissioner Abraham, he's back.
I think we just have two more.
Okay. We're close.
I think we were a little full tonight.
Yeah.
Hello, Madam Mayor.
Hello, welcome back. Before you continue, I just want to make sure Commissioner Abraham was able to get back in. I saw him join, I'm sure his audio is coming up.
Okay, I'm back, and I think Commissioner Abraham, can you hear us? I can see your logo. I'm going to mute myself and call him on his cellphone and see if he's got it on.
Thank you.
It went three hours and then bumped this off.
Yep. Can you imagine? Our school system is doing some miraculous work, trying to facilitate this to happen on a regular basis with multiple students, and it's pretty impressive, I have a lot of admiration for the work they're putting in to make it possible.
It's really kind of amazing when you think about it, the level of service they're able to provide.
Yes.
Hello?
Oh, there he is.
I don't know what happened.
I think the whole City Hall internet kicked all of you off.
Yeah, correct, we had a network issue at City Hall, so every...
I know.
All right, at the bottom left, click on the little video, the little camera with the line through it, and it should turn you back on.
And if not, I think it's okay, we're not taking votes anymore tonight, we're just listening to introductions, so I think it's okay, if you're okay with it.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I'm going to let Ms. Tracy finish what she was, had started on the item that's on the table right now concerning the signs.
I'm not exactly sure where I got cut off, but I just wanted to say that this is a relatively small amendment to the sign regulations because it pertains to the mixed-use and A1 districts, which is a relatively...
Okay. So... I lost her, did you all lose her?
I think the other thing she was going to say, I've got it in front of me, was the one thing was about it does prohibit the changing of the message between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. to prevent any flashing during sleep and, during sleep hours. So it's just this one section, I actually had this request come in, and I had talked to Tamara about it several times.
Great.
I know it was approved by the Planning Commission, coming to us as their approval.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate that. So I guess we're going to move on, and Tamara, if we have more questions, I know you'll be on next time when we actually vote on this item, we can, we can follow up. I think we're tired and the technology is tired as well, so we're going to move on, and Commissioner Abraham has left, and if you two are comfortable, I'm going to keep moving forward with this agenda and get this meeting through.
There are no votes, right?
There are no votes, that's correct, yes, these are just introductions. The next item is 5D. City Clerk, would you mind reading?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Amending Section 126-176 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky to provide for an alternative rezoning approval process, renaming of the section, expanding notice requirements, and reordering and renumbering of the section. This ordinance is summarized as follows: This ordinance accepts and adopts the recommendation of the Paducah Planning Commission to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky to allow for an alternative map amendment process to provide for added efficiencies. This amendment would allow for the Planning Commission recommendations for map amendments to become final 21 days after the Planning Commission's decision if there are no requests that the application be brought before the Board of Commissioners. Further, this ordinance cleans up certain language, including renaming of the section, organization of the section, and expanding the legal notice parameters and the amount of time given.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I don't know if Tamara has made it back on. Are you all comfortable with moving forward and asking questions between the meeting and the next meeting as well? Commissioner Watkins, you're muted, don't forget.
Well, we can go through rather quickly, I don't think we probably have any questions, we'll just, you know, go through the process.
Yeah, I was asking because I didn't see Tamara on the call, but I think she finally got back on.
Here's my presentation. Please approve.
Yeah, there's a lot of contacts on the line, I don't know where that's coming from. Tamara, will you be prepared to, will you be prepared to go into more detail at our next meeting about this item, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have item 5F.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, approving a First Amendment and extension to write a first refusal between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the Paducah Riverfront Hotel, respect to the public project authorizing the execution of the First Amendment. This ordinance authorizes the execution on behalf of the City of First Amendment and an extension to write a first refusal agreement dated November 4th, 2015, between City and the City of Paducah Riverfront Hotel, the developer, as the real estate owned by the city and generally located at 501 North 3rd Street, Paducah County, Kentucky. The First Amendment amends and extends the expiration date of the original agreement and amends developers' commitments under the agreement to allow more flexibility in the type of full-service accommodations for transient travelers, travels, and tourists to be on the real estate.
All right, I think I see the City Manager on here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is, this agreement basically takes the current three-year write or first refusal, Lingate, extended by two years, it will expire July 15th, 2022, and it still keeps the $300,000 in for the price of sale for the property. It also gives them flexibility, as the clerk just referenced, to allow for a upscale boutique hotel, however you want to say it, and then also allowing for first-floor retail.
Any questions for the City Manager? No? All right, well, I...
Mayor, I think that I missed the "so moved" and the "second" on that one.
It was me and Commissioner Wilson, I believe, unless I'm forgetting.
Second.
Okay.
I guess, Tim, I would just ask, Tim, you've, I know, I think you've been the one talking to them, so they're still interested in continuing with the agreement that what they have, and this is Lingate who owns the holiday... And this is Lingate who owns the Holiday Inn.
This is Lingate who owns the Holiday Inn. They also have, of course, local investors involved with the project for the Holiday Inn portion of it. They are, they approached the city. They came up to actually approach the mayor. And the mayor and I talked to them a few weeks ago and they've already signed this. So they are interested in the project.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was a really exciting phone call to get. And Jim and I got on the call and they're definitely brainstorming about their opportunities and their growth. And they recognize that there is a little bit of a pause right now in the market, but they want the opportunity two years from now when we're all hoping that the market's gonna come back and bounce back when we can see some of this potential executed. So good opportunity for our community once again. I'm gonna move us forward to the comments from the City Manager.
I have none, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any commissioners have anything they'd like to add tonight? I think Commissioner Abraham was able to get back on audio.
I don't know what's wrong with the camera.
There's a lot going on right now with technology, so who knows? Does any of the commissioners, everyone okay for tonight? All right, I'm gonna move us. We've already heard from the public. We've heard all the public comments tonight that signed up. And I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, meeting adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too.